Advertised work session on the budget, so we have several budget departments to hear from, and then we've got a budget issue to talk about. First person on the agenda is the city manager, so, welcome.
Nice to meet you, city manager.
While we're waiting for the city manager, I want to thank one of our constituents who brought the cookies for us tonight.
Yeah.
Is that implying we should have a bake sale to close?
Probably a good thing Wyatt's here. He may have been surprised what the budget looked like once he got down here.
We don't have one of those.
How are we for that? How are we for that?
KB. Kathy.
Vice Mayor Snyder, we have for tonight's budget discussion, the departments that we'll go through include the city manager's budget, the executive suite, the city clerk, the city attorney, the treasurer, and city finance. These are budgets that don't have huge numbers associated with them, but they are areas of a lot of interaction with the council directly, and so we wanted to just have an opportunity to come before you and speak to those budgets. And we'll start off with the clerk of council, Kathy Bouchelle.
Before we begin, it would be really helpful, I think, why don't we set five minutes for each of the initial presentations, and if there are any questions, we can go from there. Thank you.
Might even take me five minutes. First of all, council, I just wanted to-
Page sixty of your budget books.
Page sixty. Down at the bottom, last paragraph, there are corrections to some of that. For FY14, I requested $7,000 that were unfunded, for $2,000 for electronic certification. So that's additional money from Unicode, because we just never know, we just never know what it's going to cost us, depending what the departments offer up in the way of code changes, and their prices, like everything else, have gone up. The second, number two item is supposed to be $1,000 for sign language interpreters. We've had a gentleman here who needs a sign language interpreter, and he's been at the Harris Teeter hearings. And, you know, for anybody in this, anybody who comes to any kind of public meeting, we're required by law to provide an interpreter. And after ninety minutes, you have to have two interpreters. So I put $1,000 in the budget, and I have a second $1,000 in unfunded needs. I added, requested an additional, this is unfunded needs, $1,000 for training funds for the city clerk and the deputy for advanced certification, and $3,000 to scan and electronically store the old real estate transactions, agreements, and contract files that I've had in my office for thirteen years. A lot of them are on tissue paper. We could destroy them by law with regard to record destruction, but some of the items are known by colloquial names, like Podolnic property, and so as you go down, you know, in future years, somebody refers to Podolnic property, nobody's going to know what it is. So I thought it might be a good idea to have this scanned, and the company we use has been very, very reasonable. In the council budget, you know, we have your basic expenses. Most of the office expenses are under the city clerk budget, like office supplies, copying, and that sort of thing. I do have some money for travel, so y'all can go to VML. The items that are the big variables under your budget are the council of governments, the NVRC, the NVTC, and the VML dues. And those, those are regional, those are dues that are variable, so we can never, we never know really how they're going to play out. So it's kind of hard to budget for those, but those, you know, just like everything else, have gone up. Under, under my budget, I added a little more money to travel and education, but not much, a little bit. In subgroup C, professional and contractual areas of expense, under professional services, I did add $1,000 for the sign language interpreter, and the maintenance service contract is for Granicus. Printing and binding is a problematic area, which again is Unicode. We had a huge expense when we redid the fire code, and again, we just, we don't know, we haven't even touched the zoning code. When that gets overhauled, if that ever happens, that will be a huge expense. And the advertising is for the news press, and that's also a variable. We just never know how many things we're going to have to advertise, and again, that's required by law. So we have to have enough funding for that. Under lease and rental equipment, that's for the copier lease, for our share of the copier upstairs. The travel conferences and education are for the Virginia Clerks Association and the International Institute. And under office supplies, we just, it's pretty much about the same. Anybody have questions?
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes?
Mr. Vice Mayor, I, you know, as I said the other night, I commend the city for coming in with an extremely tight budget. They have been, I think, extraordinarily mindful of the, of the vulnerabilities that we face. I would like to say that of the unfunded mandates, I particularly feel that the $3,000 to scan and store old real estate transactions, agreements, and contract files is something that we should consider restoring. I think that the city, the city, the city is exposed, I think legally, if these records are not part of any, any sort of historic, durable historic record. And I'm concerned about this. I think Ms. Bouchelle is quite, quite correct that as institutional memories fade, we may not be able to remember what transacted and with what property. And so I would just, I would urge that a 3,000, that restoring $3,000 to scan and store old real estate transaction records might be, in the long run, an important, an important and durable part of the city's history.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for the city clerk? Yes, council member Duncan?
Thank you. Under work sessions, video streamed live, if plan and commission is not meeting at the same time. So that means, like, tonight's is being video streamed live? Is that right?
I would assume so. Now Cindy?
Well-
Mike was here a moment ago. We are working on the IT piece to actually connect the room fiber-wise, cable-wise, from here to Chambers. We have the capability to run it live as long as, because you only do one at a time. So I'm not sure we're actually running live right now.
Well, we do, right. I really didn't mean to ask right here, right this very second. My point was, what would be involved, you know, in opening up another channel so that you could livestream a work session the council was having at the same time that the plan and commission was meeting?
A little more time to implement some IT in projects we already have going with FCC TV, who's doing the engineering work for us, but they do it on a part-time basis.
Okay. So that's, it's technically possible to do it. It's a matter of allocating some time and maybe a few resources, but it would be typical for our work sessions to conflict with the plan and commission, right? I mean, most Mondays-
Yes.
So to say that it happens except when they don't meet, it would be the exception that they would not be meeting when we would be. So if we want to say that we are livestreaming the work sessions, that would be an effort that we would have to commit to. Is that right?
And it's required additional funding, which we have mostly secured with the Cox grant back when we did the digital TV station conversion, some additional IT money, and then it'll take time and resources with FCC TV.
I would just encourage us, thank you. I'd just encourage us to pursue that, because I think that what goes on in these work sessions is interesting, more so maybe than what goes on in full sessions, so.
And the work sessions are, they are uploaded, but it's not live. It's uploaded a day or so afterwards, and then Veronica goes in and does the timestamping.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, council member Duncan. No comments on how you define interesting. Moving right along. Any other questions for the city clerk? Yes, council member Tarter?
This isn't really for the city clerk. It's probably for somebody else, but I see that benefits have gone up 10%. Is there an explanation of why they're going up? Maybe it's been had in somewhere out there. I just don't remember it, but I presume that citywide, a 10% increase in benefits?
Yes, sir. It's primarily driven by pension and health care.
So what percentage? I got the pension. We've all talked about that an awful lot, the pension situation. How about health care? How much is, approximately, how much is health care going up this year?
10%.
And do you guys shop health care on a somewhat regular basis to try to reduce those costs?
That's Richard Parker.
Richard Parker administers our health program. What I would suggest is that we wait. He'll be up here before you in just about five minutes.
Okay. Any other questions for the city clerk? He got off light. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Who's up next, Mr. City Manager?
City Attorney is up next.
City Attorney.
Oh, wow. How bad we am.
That is a problem.
My budget is at pages sixty-two to sixty-three. Couple of things I wanted to point out. The first is, there is, as Mr. Tarter just noted, an increase of about 10.6% in benefits. I'll let Mr. Parker get into further detail. My understanding is that's an across-the-board increase. Another point, at the bottom of page sixty-two, third paragraph, it gets into legal services and the demand for the upcoming fiscal year. I do want to modify that somewhat. The demand for the upcoming fiscal year for legal services is going to be dependent upon, first of all, whether the sale of the water system goes through or not. If it does not, then the ordinance challenge we had filed would be back in court, and there would be some fees associated with that. There would also be the potential, anyway, with the ongoing development projects in the city, that there may be some litigation filed, as has been filed in some instances in past years. But again, it's hard to predict with certainty. It's also possible that the actual litigation demand may go down, particularly if the water system is, is sold and approved at referendum in November of this year. So with that, I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions for the city attorney? Yes, council member Barry?
I was interested in the .025 Assistant Prosecutor, the quarter, the quarter individual. You know, you and I have had an opportunity to talk on, on a regular basis about what the city needs and the importance of being, as they say, penny wise and pound foolish. Actually, before I finish that sentence, I do want to say to Mr. Tarter's point, if you look through the budget, almost every line in every department is a 10% increase in salary and benefits, so there's nothing, nothing new about that. Nope, okay. That's it. Just it's, it's, the 10% is all the way through the, okay.
Yeah, yeah, but just to clarify for everybody, some confusion over the page. The pay, you, the city clerk was calling out electronic page numbers, and you're calling out paper page numbers, and that's why some people are like.
Okay.
Yeah.
Some people being you, Dave. Yeah. Have another cookie, Dave. It's, it's all good.
What an unruly group. Okay, go ahead, council member Barry.
The .25 Assistant Prosecutor, we've talked about how, you know, your, your office, you know, continues to need staffing. Again, I caution, are we being penny wise and pound foolish? Do we actually need, you know, are we being short-sighted in this respect by not having a full-time Assistant Prosecutor? I mean, do we, do we face any vulnerability?
No, and I'm glad you brought that up. That really is, I think, a carryover from last year, and is, should be removed. As the council knows, in previous years, we did have a part-time prosecutor who was a contract attorney, but he's no longer on city payroll. We have, effective this current fiscal year, had Arlington County come in and handle misdemeanors as well as juvenile court. And so that, that explains why salaries and wages from FY12 to FY13 actually went down. You'll see, they went from 234 down to 209. The, I touch base periodically with chief of police and others who work day-to-day with the prosecutor's office. I've gotten nothing but positive feedback since we've made the change to the Arlington Commonwealth Attorney's Office. Have, have not had any negative feedback, and I meet with the chief quarterly just to monitor how things are going.
Any other questions for the city attorney? Yes, council member Kaylin?
Thank you. John, do you see any trends in demands on your time? Falls Church appears to be a pretty litigious little community, and also seems to be a lot of lawyers in town, some with law degrees, others without.
No comment.
Do you, do you see, you know, really, to get in front of this, do you see a trend where this is accelerating, or not accelerating, but is increasing at least? Or do you think that it's stable and won't affect your staffing requirements?
Yeah, that's, it's so hard to predict in any one year whether there's going to be a need for, you know, outside litigation counsel. You know, I can just tell you, I started here in 2008. In fiscal year 2009, which started in July of 2008, we had several development lawsuits. In other words, lawsuits filed challenging the development of the hotel down on West Broad. And then in fiscal year 2009, and fiscal year 2010, of course, the big litigation demand then was related to the, to the water system. As I mentioned a minute ago, my sense is that obviously if the sale is approved by our citizens in November, the demand for the water litigation will go away. But that's not to say that, you know, with the development that's currently in the pipeline, that there might not be, again, suits challenging development if it ends up getting approved.
I wasn't really talking about trying to predict, you know, exactly the, you know, the trend, because these, some of these are idiosyncratic requirements, but if there's a baseline, you know, the number of issues regarding zoning, or the number of issues regarding, you know, other types of internal discussions, if you see sort of a baseline change in that, or whether you see that as, as flat. The other stuff is very, I would think it'd be very difficult to predict.
Yeah. I mean, I think that with respect to zoning, there are, it seems like there are some issues that come up, but it's, it's pretty predictable. I think there's probably one or two issues per year that come up, and, you know, we've been able thus far to handle those in-house. It really is the big, you know, what I call the big complex litigation, that simply is just too much for a one-attorney shop to handle, that we need to bring in outside counsel. And that thus far has mainly been with the water litigation and some, really mainly the water litigation.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Council member Duncan?
Just on that theme, as we assemble a portfolio of persuasive arguments to tell the voters why they should vote for the sale of the water referendum, I want you to know that I'm going to pull the clip out that you just gave there. It's also possible that litigation costs will go down with the passage of the water referendum. Don't want to box you in or anything, but I think it is important, because here, the schools community often talks about, oh, God, all the money that we spent, not just the schools community, but the whole city, on the water litigation. I think it is important to acknowledge in this budget that we hope we are going to be turning a page in this fiscal year, because of all the hard work that so many people have done, that, you know, our litigation costs, or risk of that at least, would be reduced. So that is, that's kind of an important initiative, I guess, in your budget in this fiscal year, I would say. The other question was, if we had any history while you've been here of litigation involving, you know, prisoners, transfer of prisoners, handling of prisoners, have been any, any complaints?
No. Not in my almost five years here, not had any litigation involving the transfer or handling of prisoners. We, as is noted in the budget here, on a completely other area, I handle personnel in-house. We've had no personnel lawsuits in the five years I've been here, and so that has been very stable.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks very much. Any other questions for the city attorney? Council member Tarter?
Yeah, just two of them. One, what is the savings you anticipate if the water, you know, sale goes through as far as litigation costs have been budgeted that may not be used? Do you have a number?
I don't have a number. I can tell you, I'm working on that, because I don't, I want to make sure the number's good, so to speak, before I, you know, I give it to you all. I can tell you that, that there is going to be money available in the current fiscal year that have been set aside for water. The question is just how much? And it really is, you know, we've got to reconcile some current bills that, you know, are in the pipeline to be paid, and once we've done that, I'll have a fixed number for you.
Like an idea, like a rough ballpark idea?
You know, I think it's probably going to be somewhere around $400,000, but there, there are some other litigation matters, again, that I do need to, you know, to get a fixed number on before I can give you a definite number.
One last question. In changing from, well, his name's escaping me, but to the Commonwealth attorney to prosecute misdemeanors, traffic events, did you save money? Did it cost more? How did that break down price-wise?
It netted out to, it's about, I think, about $25,000 more than we were paying total. And again, I think that it is worth that extra, in that you have now about fourteen attorneys in the Arlington Commonwealth Attorney's Office who are available to prosecute cases here. They have deep bench strength, and as I mentioned earlier, I've got nothing but positive feedback in my consultations with the chief of police and court officers. And I think it's really just been a good experience all around, and most importantly, the citizens of the city of Falls Church are getting, you know, the highest quality representation from the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
And one, one more thing. And this has probably been hashed out in past years, courts and all that, like, I guess I'm new, a little bit new to this. Are there any savings to be had with courts? Would we just sort of decided that we can't do anything as far as efficiency or organization that would net us any savings?
Yeah, we were talking about with respect to the judicial services agreement.
Well, not just that, but actually just, you know, having courts meet in Falls Church on Wednesdays, as opposed to, you know, having things happen in Arlington, for example. And has that all been kind of hashed out? Can you just-
Yeah, I mean, I guess there are really, there are two issues. There, one is, if I hear what you're asking, is, could we just have court in Arlington and not have court here in Falls Church? And, and the answer to that is that under our charter, under Virginia Code, you're required to have court convene in the jurisdiction in which, you know, the court is located. So we do have to have court here in Falls Church. We could not, you know, move it to Arlington. With respect to, you know, other efficiencies, we've, you know, we've looked at that very closely, and I really, I think it's, it's, we've gotten it to be about as efficient as it, as it can be. You know, I understand that it's, you know, still, it's a significant amount of money that has to be paid, but I know, you know, we've looked at it closely, Wyatt and his folks have looked at it closely, and it's just about as good as we can do.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks. Any other questions for the city attorney? I really liked some of those answers. I think we're given a very good reason for supporting the acceptance of the mediation of the water system, so yet another very good reason, so. I think that's why I support it, and there may be others as well. Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Next up, do we have the city manager?
No. Next up is the executive management, and that includes the city manager's office, the office of communications, economic development, human resources and risk management, and IT. These are all at page sixty-four of your budget book. Overall, the executive department has a budget of $3.18 million. It's a 2.3% increase over FY 2013. The, the city manager's office, the, there are no changes in that budget in terms of new initiatives. There is an unmet need that I just want to note, that with the sale of the water system, that the function of our sustainability coordinator, Brenda Creel, leads that effort citywide, and she will, will be going to Fairfax Water if the sale is approved, and so we will lose that capacity, and don't have a plan right now to, to make that up. And so I've noted that as an unmet need to continue our, particularly in the area of climate change, to tally up what our carbon footprint is, and to proceed with our goal setting, to reduce our carbon emissions, and report that out, and hold ourselves accountable to that. So that is an unmet need in the budget. Shifting to the office of communications, again, a flat budget here. I will note, though, that there is a shift within the budget of an ongoing shift away from printed materials and towards digital materials. And so if you look on page sixty-eight, in the area of the professional contractual services, that's where our printing spending is, that $27,650, which will not go up, but we will be using that money to redeploy towards a upgrade or an update to the city webpage. We'll also be using some of our IT funds for that. Then shifting to economic development, this has a staff of two in our economic development office, and it is a status quo budget in economic development as well. If there aren't any questions on those three things, we'll then shift to HR, human resources, and then to IT. IT is the largest share of the, of the executive management budget. Yes? Council member Barry?
I'm being recognized.
I'm sorry.
Council member Barry.
Why not? Go ahead.
Stepped across the line.
Just, just leaped right across it. Yeah, I had, I had actually taken very, very extensive notes here. The unfunded administrative assistant position, the $44,000, I feel strongly that the council should consider putting that position in. I would ask that it be included. It's a $44,000 expense. Again, I think this is an issue of vulnerability in terms of required administrative compliance. I think the clerk's office, the city clerk's office, and the assistant city clerk have been pulled away in order to provide this important support, and I, and I would like the council to consider putting this position back in so that the clerk's office can, again, can be compliant with the various duties that they, that they need to, to fulfill. So that's the one thing I would like to see back in. And then, Mr. Snyder, at some point, I don't know how we do this, but I've now, this is, this is the second position I've asked, or the second piece I've asked to be restored into the budget, so I don't know what the process is. If I just say that and everybody votes, or doesn't vote, or, or-
I think we keep it running.
Keep it running, Les. Okay. 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 Excellent. That's, that's fine. Then on the communications, the online communications specialist position, I presume this is web, social media, Twitter, et cetera, et cetera. Is this shared with other departments throughout the city?
Yes. All of these departments serve the whole city.
Okay.
Or all of these call centers.
Okay. And then I was on, perhaps I've just, I've, oh, yes, I, I'm at HR, so I've overreached myself, so I'll wait till that conversation.
Thank you. Other questions? Council member Duncan?
Sorry. Flipping back in my book. So, the constituent comment system that's referred to in the fourth paragraph, system manager responded to approximately 100 submissions. That number jumped out at me, because I am quite sure that I've, and we all, have received 100 emails in the last week about maybe three issues, much less 100 in a whole year. So somehow this is a, you know, underappreciated resource, I think, and I'm just wondering if, I, for instance, really don't, should, but don't know how to steer people to it, and I'm wondering how you feel that's working, and if it could work better, we would each receive fewer or more consolidated inquiries via email.
Well, it is, it's a good system. What, some of the good things about it are that it provides tracking, and so the question or the comment comes in, we can track where it goes, how long it takes for it to be resolved, and you get a, you know, a data set out of it. And the difficulty with it is that most people prefer just to send an email. Going through the, the comment box is, perhaps feels a little bit less-
Personal?
Personal than sending a direct email, either to a council member, or to the city manager, or to a department head. So what we are supposed to do, then, is when we get those emails, we're supposed to then funnel them through the comment system. But that's a big level of effort, and as a practical matter, we don't have time to do that. So that's kind of the state of-
Okay. Well, let's hopefully, no. I think, yeah, the ability to track, measure, you know, and efficiently handle would be improved if more people would use that system, and if there's anything that we as individual council members can do to encourage people to take that route, so that, oh, yeah, you know, Tarter's taking care of that box this week, and, you know, Duncan's doing it the week after that. week, and, you know, Duncan's doing it the week after that, I mean, if there's anything we can do to make it feel more personal...
Take it, yeah.
Yeah, okay. As long as you pay me, pay me to be a .25 FTE, and I'll do it for you, I can contract out my business to do it. But, you know, I mean, seriously, if there's anything we can do, it's just, if there is one thing that I did not expect, it is the immense volume and variety of electronic communications, and boy, I love them, but, you know, anyway, if we've got a system. The sustainability coordinator, as we discussed last night, the infrastructure that would be contemplated on the stormwater management utility, which I think was seven new staffers, just a question to consider, you know, could some sustainability component be built into the new stormwater utility fund, even if it's a .10 FTE, just to get the, you know, to keep the ball rolling? Because as I read this, you know, when we sell the water utility, we're dead in the water on sustainability coordinating, and that may not be entirely true, but if somebody in the new stormwater utility system could be tasked to pay some attention to that, if we decide to go that route, I would suggest it.
And I will note that this is principally on climate change. Recycling is probably one of our most successful local environmental programs with our very high recycling rate, that has a huge climate change benefit as well. And then our stormwater, or broadly, our Chesapeake Bay programs are the biggest investment that we currently make, because we make that through our sewer fees, and we'll continue to do so on a higher level through stormwater. So those are the big two. What we're missing, really, though, going forward, is that ability to take the initiative on our, both our tracking our carbon emissions and trying to meet our goals for reducing them.
Okay, well, I think it seems like an important area, and if we are increasing staff in the broadest sense, and things having to do with the management of things that fall from the sky, maybe sustainability could be included as a component of that. Is OCOM, are we still, are we talking about OCOM here? Okay. I just wondered, out of all the outreach that we use, what's the feeling, Facebook, Twitter, emails, about what the community really responds to the most? I'm just kind of personally curious to know.
Amy, can you answer that?
We found it coming from the microphone. We're hitting different audiences with each different tool. We have people who are devoted to using Facebook, people who use Twitter, and we have been able to manage our time by using a system that allows us to kind of cross-post easily. We re-upped the, or sort of revamped the eFocus newsletter, which we've seen great response just in the past two issues with that new one, and I think that gets the most, we can also track with that, we can see how many people are reading it, how many people forward it, how many people click on the links within it, and then additionally, the news releases, we know that the news press has a devoted following, and getting our information in there also, so getting it out to those, all the different platforms, we can only measure so many of them with the technology, but I see value in all of them.
Mm-hmm, okay, well, that's why I asked Mr. Snyder, I think, tonight, or the other night, ask about, you know, printing costs and so forth. The perception is that, you know, because of the demographics of the community, maybe, even though we're highly online, there's still a lot of people that do seem to not think it happens until they read it in print, and, but you're able to push that information out across all these platforms without much duplication of effort now, as I understand. Okay, so it's, it doesn't make a lot of extra work to, you know, send a news release as opposed to a tweet or a Facebook posting.
Right, and I think maximizing the amount of people that we're able to reach is essential, so...
Yeah, okay.
Eliminating one would alienate some...
At least for now, right, that's what we would see in the future, okay. Now, you know, of course, I and I are always chatting on Facebook, so...
Yeah, yeah. We're making all over the place.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Amy. This refers to the general manager of FCC TV, I know that's another discussion, bigger discussion, but is it based on something you said last night, is it contemplated that the general manager will remain in the OCOM position?
We are working with the school staff right now on trying to come to the council with a proposal on how to move forward with FCC TV.
Stay tuned later, just because it's mentioned in here.
It is, so, right now, the schools did a reduction in staff, two budgets ago, of their director of communications, and when that happened, the air OCOM director, then Barbara Gordon, became the superintendent of FCC TV, but all the budgeting and the administration still occurs on the school side. So we're working through options right now, and we'll come forward with a recommendation.
Okay, I learned some of this by attending the, as the liaison, and, okay, that's good, because that certainly bears talking about further, I think. Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other questions from, on this segment? Okay, there being none, move on.
Okay. With respect to human resources, Richard Parker is here to just talk about the budget, but also if there are questions about compensation and benefits, Richard is our person for that.
Okay, the HR budget is on page 71 of your book, I don't know what it is electronically, and we have two cost centers. The main human resources is on page 71, and then the risk management section is on page 73. Overall, between the two cost centers, for FY 14, there's an increase of about $6,000. $4,000 of that is an increase in the tuition assistance program that the city, that HR administers for the city. So that's why on page 71, you'll see our benefits change is 21%, much higher than the normal amount, that's because it has the citywide tuition assistance program is included in that figure.
And that's $10,000 citywide.
Yeah, and I wish we could make it more. This year, it's $6,000. We had to stop that a couple of months ago because we had reached that limit, in fact, we'd gone over that limit, but it is something that is utilized throughout the organization at different levels, so that's one of the increases in there. Everything else is pretty much the same. On page 73, under the risk management section, the costs are down a little bit in FY 14 for two reasons. One is that we have changed vendors to administer the random drug program for employees that have commercial driver's license in order, we have to do a certain percentage to be in compliance with the DOT regulations, so that saved us about $5,000. And then the, some of the insurances are a little bit lower FY 14 than we had budgeted in FY 13. So overall, it's about a .9% increase in the two budgets, so. Anybody has any questions on theirs, and then I can talk about benefits a little bit.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kaylin?
Thank you. I think you were also discussing your pension, or is that coming up?
I was going to discuss a little bit about, yeah, I was going to say something about that in a few minutes, yeah.
Well, wait, because I have questions about that.
Sure.
Councilmember Berry?
Yes, first of all, it took me, it took me a beat to figure out that risk management plus HR equals a 100%...
Yes.
Position, okay, so it took me, yeah, it took me a bit.
We have three people, so if you add the two cost centers, you come up with a total of three.
One, two. The, I was just, I was very interested in, obviously, in the risk management issue, but what, I looked at the position of human resources generalist and human resources analyst, and what is the difference between a generalist and an analyst? What are they?
The generalist is primarily, works in the benefits area, handles the open season, works with employees, and new employees, as far as the orientation of everything that goes with all their benefits, so they understand what they need to sign up for, administers the day-to-day benefit program. The analyst is, works with me in the area of compensation, to make sure that the city's classification plan is up to date. That position is also the primary lead on recruitment area, although, you know, being a three-person shop, we all take turns in doing things, but that's primarily into the recruitment area as well. And then that position fills in for me when I'm, when I'm out of the office. And then it also, all three positions, but primarily myself and the HR analyst position do the bulk of the employee counseling, or working with other managers to different divisions, and then the HR analyst also works with me in the area of training.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Tarter?
On page 73, I saw this box that says, "Most of the increase in FY 12, whatever, 2013 is due to a $75,000 increase in the general fund for the city's public officials' insurance." And one, is that because Phil and I were elected? And two, I'm just curious, that's a huge number, our insurance went up $75,000 relating to public officials?
It did, and we can't blame you because you were not on the council, though that was really, that was really the result of the lawsuit with Fairfax Water. There was a tremendous claim that Fairfax, that the VML paid us well over a million dollars to cover legal expenses and things like that, dealing with that, so it was because of the experience that it caused the premium to go up quite a bit.
So, it's not self-insurance, we're not self-insured here just locally, we're part of a pool that's statewide, is that correct?
Yes.
And so that pool does risk assessment, and they looked at what happened with the water authority a couple of years ago, the water litigation, and said, geez, these guys are high-risk folks, maybe, and they upped our insurance rates, is that essentially what happened?
In that area, the rates did go up quite a bit, and generally speaking, that's usually for like a three-year period, and then if things stabilize, then it starts to go back down again. But yes, it was due to claims experience.
Gotcha. What's that?
Yeah, it's good to know.
And so how far are we into that three-year potential spike?
This should be the last year.
So insurance may go down.
FY 14, it may go down, yeah.
Okay.
And then if the water system is sold, then that issue's totally removed from potential litigation in the future, too, so.
So the insurance that was mentioned, I heard about this a while ago, that was paying for some of the attorney's fees, that wasn't necessarily through the water authority, it was through the city's general, you know, fund or whatever, I mean, it wasn't, the water authority's a separate, distinct animal, was it covered by the insurance as well? The same insurance policy?
We had submitted, a couple, two or three years ago, we submitted a lot of bills for expenses incurred, and then the VML did make a large payment to the city. You know, there was some question as to whether there was coverage or not, so it took a while to get to that point. Subsequent to that, I know there's been additional attorney's fees that have not been covered by the VML, that, and they'd have, either Richard or John would have to speak of how much of that's come, I think it's primarily come out of the water fund, but I don't know exactly how that was handled.
So before, they were covered at a certain point in time, is it because it's a different cause of action that they're not covered, the recent expenses you were saying that are...
Yeah, I mean, we could, it's getting close to the point where we may want to take this up in a closed session at the next meeting, but, I mean, I could just speak generally, and you just hit the nail on the head, that there have been several different suits, some of which were determined, as Mr. Parker indicated, after the conclusion of the litigation, where VML determined they were going to go ahead and provide coverage, others, they have not. And again, some of the litigation in 2009 and 2010, VML, when that litigation concluded, did go ahead and make a payment to the city, and as Mr. Parker indicated, that, I guess, subsequently was reflected in the increase in the premium.
Are we intending to submit any more, like this recent litigation we intend to submit?
Yes, yes, that's on, that's certainly on the list. We've, I've wanted to conclude with respect to the rate refund litigation, for example, and then we can turn around and make the necessary claims to get that, get that paid.
So some of the expenses we're talking about now may actually, in fact, be reversed.
May, but I want to be clear that there's no guarantee there, and again, we can take that up at a later closed session as to why.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Parker, I think you were going to be talking about, I know, wait a minute, I was about to transition there.
Oh, he said, "Thank you," I thought you were releasing him from duty.
No, no, no.
No, no. That would be too easy.
In fact, I was making clear that he isn't released, so, anyway, Mr. Parker, go ahead, and I know Mr. Kaylin will have some questions for you.
Well, let me just give you a general overview. Mr. Tarter had asked a little while ago about the city benefits, so let me just give you a little overall of where we are in FY 14. The big driver in the area of benefits, as Mr. LaConde said, is in the pension area, where the cost to fund the plans for the city is going up about 17.5% in FY 14 from FY 13. Other benefits that we have, the OPEB, which is the other post-employment benefits, primarily retiree health insurance, the rates are pretty stable, they're only going up about 1% in FY 14. In the health insurance arena, the city has two plans. We have one with United Healthcare through the Council of Governments. That plan is going up 10%. Originally, United Health had asked for 18%, but working with our consultants, with the Coalition, we were able to get that down to 10%, which, given the loss experience of the group, I think is a reasonable, a reasonable rate, and the city actually had, experience was not the best this year, so we, you know, I think that's a good deal for the city. The other plan that we have is Kaiser Permanente, and those rates basically were flat for renewal, they're .18% increase. So if you look at, between the two of them, it's, one was 10%, the other was .18%, so right now, we have a little bit more people probably with United Healthcare than we do with Kaiser, so it probably averages out to a 6% or 7% increase. Other benefits that we have, city's life insurance, which we bid three years ago, and did receive a cost savings on that, is going up a little bit this year, although the rate on that is still what I think is a very good rate, it's a cheaper rate than what the state of Virginia charges.
Mr. Parker, if I might interrupt, what page are you on now? I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm not on a page, I was just...
That's frequently my case as well, so, but thank you, it's good.
You're on the same page.
All I know is I'm not on a page.
Okay, I'm sorry, I was just giving a summary of the benefits, so...
Where should we look in the book, by the way? Is this written down anywhere?
No, it, the retirement is spread out among all the departments, what Richard is giving you is a summation of the retirement benefits as a whole. We do have that information, but you don't want to see that spreadsheet.
Mr. Kaylin, do you want to see that spreadsheet?
It's a matter of faith.
Actually, I have a pretty good idea of the sum totals, and that's another issue.
Well, I mean, it's, again, it's not about totals, it's just that the sheet is a pretty busy sheet, because what it does is it lists line items as opposed to departments. So what we give you is by department and function as opposed to line item. What Richard is going through is, he's telling you why individual departments have these big increases in retirement, because retirement costs as a whole have gone up.
Okay. So we're on the same page, but there's no page?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, thanks, thank you.
And then, as I mentioned, in the area of life insurance, there is some increase in FY 14, but the rate is still very competitive, it's actually a lower rate than the VRS charges for state employees throughout Virginia. And then in the long-term disability area, we negotiated a very favorable contract for the city three years ago, and that carrier has renewed that at the same rate for FY 14. So bottom line on the benefits overall is, they're actually all staying about the same, with the exception of the 10% increase in the health insurance, and then the pension cost, which, you know, the Retirement Board, Connie Ryberg, came and talked to the council a couple of months ago about where we are on that, and what the projections are going forward on that. Mr. Kaylin is the council liaison, attends most of the board meetings, and so I think with the plan design changes we made a couple of years ago, that the council approved, that went into effect, hopefully, things will stabilize. I think the five-year projections calls predicted it to go up a little bit in FY 15, and then to start stabilizing, and perhaps go down just a little bit, but it's, it's going to be a... going to be, you know, a big cost driver for many years to come, so.
And the council, just for context, council may recall a chart that was in my initial presentation, where we have one point two million dollars of additional funds for the general government across the board. That was how much additional money there was, at three point nine percent growth. Of that, four hundred thousand dollars is going to Arlington County in IJ contract increases. Four hundred thousand of that is going to pension and benefit increases relative to this discussion, which leaves four hundred thousand dollars for everything else. And so that's really the main constraint that we built this budget under.
Okay, thanks very much. Mr. Kalin, do you have any questions?
Yes, and, well, just to announce proudly, what's called a GUTEN, in terms of the, my use of computers. I can see by the expression you don't, I'll tell you later. On the, on the retirement issue, there are a couple of concerns, and then there's an issue for you, Wyatt, because one of the issues is that Connie is doing, is a fabulous addition, and she's a pension actuary, and she's very knowledgeable, but she's a volunteer, and the basic plan is about seventy million dollars, if I'm not mistaken, in assets. And if, for some reason, she had to leave, there's an exposure, because no one else has her level of expertise on the retirement board to watch what our manager is doing, the individual who's our asset manager. Seems to me there's a huge operational risk. Perhaps, you know, many years ago, when the fund was small, it was perfectly okay to have, as a volunteer, fully volunteer group. But I am concerned, given the complexity of today's markets and asset management, that there's a risk, a serious risk there. And it'd be very important to figure out how you would protect against the risk if someone of her stature had to leave for whatever reason, and there was a vacancy in that position for any period of time. I mean, even if you go through the normal process of securing a new appointment, during that transition, there's an exposure that's completely uncovered, in terms of how our assets, man who's tracking them. So I just mentioned that as something that needs to be followed, also by, one of the things that one can't help but pick up is that we're really very thinly staffed. So for some reason, if Richard or John, yourself, some combination of individuals had to leave, and it wasn't a planned, you know, scheduled departure, you would have a risk of collapse in certain areas. People, you have one assistant, have, you know, half of another assistant. The city is very dependent on no surprises, and nobody leaving without giving plenty of notice. And life sometimes doesn't work that way, so there's a general concern, there's no, I don't see a business succession plan here. What happens if these things occur? How this, how the city would respond to that? This is one of the problems with, when we down the number of staff so bad, so hard, that there's no backup, and there's all sorts of risks. This, in business, is an enormous worry, is the succession risk of what happens if key personnel leave at a critical moment. And I must say, I am concerned about the exposures that the city has, especially if we have complicated legal issues, or there's negotiations taking, changes in the financial situation that require hands-on involvement with someone who's got a lot of experience. We're very exposed. I think it's something we have to think about. How are we going to, how do we grapple with that, rather than just hope that nothing, nothing goes wrong?
Thank you, Mr. Kalin, for that opinion. Any, anyone else have any other questions or comments? Mr. Duncan?
So the four hundred thousand for pension benefits, it's roughly a penny on the tax rate, roughly, is that right? Just wondering how that compares us to other jurisdictions. Probably too early to know for this fiscal year, but there are efforts in that area, there are increased costs. I mean, are we dedicating, as a proportion of our budget, about the same amount of these increases as other area jurisdictions, or because of our size, do we get hit harder by healthcare costs or anything in this area?
I think in the, in the area of the pension cost, you know, everybody's grappling with the same issue. And I think that the city is to be commended for always funding what the actuary has called for, so our plans are better funded than the average plan, the average public plan in the state of Virginia. I could certainly, I'm going to be going to a meeting next month with all the administrators of the other plans, and one of the things we do is we do provide information as to what the cost is, the employer cost is, as a percentage of payroll for each plan and that sort of thing, and I can certainly share that with you. In the past, we've generally been either in the middle of the pack or a little bit better than the average, so it is, but it is an issue that, you know, we've made a plan design change a couple of years ago. A lot of the other jurisdictions are looking at, studying the issue right now, getting ready to make some changes this year and that sort of thing. So we're a little bit ahead of the curve, but it is something that's a major issue for everybody.
I think it'd be helpful to seek comparative information, just, I mean, anytime something rises above the level of a penny on the tax rate here in Falls Church, I think, you know, it's helpful for the citizens to know where we stand on that. And if, you know, we're investing that money, and that puts us at the top of the class, then maybe that's a thing that people in Falls Church can be pleased with and proud of. And I, you know, if we're not, that's something they need to be aware of, and maybe we need to invest more in it, whatever the issue is. But, you know, the other night, when the mayor was saying, "We're going to have a tax rate of whatever, point three, four, five," I mean, we're down to half pennies on the tax rate. So an area like this, I think it is useful to know where our money is putting us on the scale of effort that's being expended compared to other jurisdictions in the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Kalin?
Again, with my experience of being on the Inter-American Delaware Bank's Pension Committee, Pension Investment Committee, these are the issues we look at. Our plan is, to a degree, sui generis, because the costs associated with other localities depends on the demographics of their staff, the grade structure of their staff, a whole bunch of things that are very, very difficult to then compare. We have an unfunded liability, I think it's about ten million dollars for the basic plan, I'm not sure what it is for the police, and I think our, maybe it's six, six or eight million dollars in the basic, but I think our post-retirement unfunded liability is larger than the liability for our pension plan. And we're going to have to pay these off at some point, very difficult to analyze. But don't forget, we're looking at the city side, but for budgeting purposes, it's the VRS teachers that's going to drive the costs of the general, you know, the city's expenses. And there we have thirty-nine million dollar shortfall, and you want a comparison? Fairfax has a two-point-six billion dollar shortfall. So these are, these are numbers, you have a very flat affect, and not sensationalist, but the pension issues are really quite preoccupying, and they're going to be quite expensive going forward. You're going to be seeing ten percents on a regular basis because of the OPEB and the pension plans. These are very, very dear, it's just the way it is, unless other changes are made.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Carter?
Sure, a question or two. I know some of those got hashed out a couple of years ago, but we have a defined benefit plan, correct, in our pension?
Yes.
What is that a percentage of, you know, your last three years, it's sixty percent? Or what is the amount that you get, kind of, for the rest of your life?
For employees that were hired before January one, two thousand and twelve, if they're in the basic plan, it's two percent for each year of service.
Two percent of their last year?
Of their highest, their highest consecutive three years of salary. For the police officers hired before January one, two thousand and twelve, it's two-point-eight percent of the first twenty years, three percent after twenty years of service, of their highest three-year salary. For employees that were hired, that have been hired after January one, two thousand and twelve, when we made the plan change, for the basic plan, it's a one-point-eight percent multiplier, and that's based on your five-year highest average salary. So that reduces the cost there some. In the police plan, it's a two-point, I believe it's a two-point-six, flat two-point-six percent multiplier for all individuals, regardless of years of service, over the highest with the five-year average salary. The other change we made for, under the new plan, is we raised the retirement age quite a bit in the basic plan. For the employees hired before January one, two thousand and twelve, it's age sixty-two. Under the new plan, it's the normal social security age, so for most employees right now, that's age sixty-six. And then if they take a reduced early retirement, we raised the reduction factor, so it doesn't cost the plan any money. So when the actuary worked on that, they came up with a normal cost, which really is the cost, if you hired somebody today, just the pension cost going forward, at that point, their estimation was seven-point-six-one percent.
Of their current salary? Of their each-year salary?
Right, and the employee right now is contributing five percent, so the issue is, Mr. Kalin said, we still have in the plan, we do have some unfunded liability, so that, you know, that raises the overall cost. But I think the Retirement Board has looked at this issue some. I think the issue as far as a defined contribution plan is, we're pretty small. We would be very difficult, Mr. Kalin was talking about lack of depth of staff, but for us to try to administer a defined benefit plan and defined contribution plan would be a challenge.
And the retirement health benefits, what are those?
They are, for an employee who retires, when they leave the city, which means that they start drawing a pension check at the time they leave the city, prior to April one, two thousand and eight, they were able to continue the coverage they had through the city, and they pay fifty percent of the premium, the city pays fifty percent of the premium. We did a resolution, the council did a resolution back in two thousand and eight, so anybody hired after April one, two thousand and eight now has to, A, work for the city at least ten years to be eligible for it, B, when they retire, if they retire from the city, then the city pays two percent per year, up to a maximum of fifty years, so fifty percent. So if you had an employee that came and retired ten years later and kept health insurance under the new provisions, the city would pay twenty percent, the retiree would pay eighty percent.
And does this stop when they hit sixty-five, and they can qualify for Medicare or Medicaid or whatever it's called? Or does it go on forever?
No, it goes on. You know, they are required to take the Medicare supplement, which means their premium does go down at that point, and they're required to take Part B of social security, so that the city's costs go down some there. But it is, it is a, you know, it's a generous benefit.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Parker? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. The IT is... About one-point-three million dollars, and we do, there's approximately one-point-three million dollars, and we do have a request for an FTE, a new position in this budget. The overall IT is just growing just under one-point-three percent, and so that position's being carved out of reductions in spending elsewhere in IT, by and large. Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council. My IT department is obviously required, charged with providing all the support for the general government library segments within the city. We're currently a staff of five FTEs, which includes myself, two being city, three being contractors, charged with supporting approximately two-hundred-and-fifty staff with over three-hundred-and-seventy workstations, eighty servers, and infrastructure devices, and, as well as the entire base of operations, application operations throughout the city. In addition, the IT department must also provide technical contract support as well. This includes the various basic services, down to telephony, telecommunications services, phone lines, internet services, as well as, you know, other application services, cloud-based application services. In the past year, IT department has closed over thirty-one-hundred service requests, with twenty-nine pretty significant major project initiatives closed out. These statistics still don't actually provide a good overview of all that the IT support services have to encompass. In particular, there's always ongoing new initiatives that many departments bring forth, so there's always a very continued, continued request put on a very small support staff. And according to the Gardner Group statistics, you know, an IT support department of what we support should have a staff of total fourteen FTEs, but obviously, for budgetary constraint purposes, the city could still probably effectively operate with eight or nine FTEs. Following the council guidance, the IT budget has remained effectively flat, with less than a one-point-three percent increase. However, due to a long identified need to support our most critical support services here, that support these entire cities as a whole, we've made a conscious decision to further adjust our existing budget to be able to fund a new FTE for a network database administrator position, utilizing no new funds. Excuse me. The budget adjustments are definitely not easy to make, because it definitely impacts our ongoing operations, to be able to effectively support the organization as a whole, but we are, we were also able to gain additional funds by renegotiating existing required support contracts that are utilized within the IT support services structure. While these adjustments definitely have an impact on these efficiencies, the, the critical need for this position was clearly identified throughout the organization, that we needed to, you know, provide more benefit to the services as a whole, which is the main city accounting, finance, building permits application, known as an ERP or MUNIS here in the city. Position will not only focus on the system support, but also operational efficiencies to help the departments better utilize the existing MUNIS application to better effectively serve the citizenry. But the position's also a longstanding required need, because it's been identified audit finding for segregation of duties by removing the deputy finance director from, as the ERP system administration at some point, and moving that into IT where it actually really belongs. And if you look at the unmet needs also, the IT department has also been, been required to take over radio support structure as well, but currently, there are no resources identified or resources at all, and there's definitely insufficient skills to cover this requirement this time. You know, therefore, we do have an unmet need to provide a communication specialist FTE, which is not presented within the existing proposed budget, but it is definitely an unmet need. This position and concept, where it was previously funded through public, that was also a public safety-only position that was kind of cut by previous budget reductions, this is going to be retooled to be a more encompassing position that will be a multi-use type of role for communicative services as a whole, telephony support, that type. But this position is really critical, it's required before we can actually even look forward to doing the required radio system upgrade, that's definitely needed as a whole. And also, as previously indicated, the, the FTE that we have done by restructuring some of the budget, it's, has an impact to the refresh cycle that we've had. And currently, the existing budget has only been able to support about a seven-to-ten year refresh on core infrastructure servers and the infrastructure devices, and about a five-to-six-year recycle on workstations. The adjustments that we made to accommodate the position only adds about an additional six-month impact, but that is an unmet need to actually bring us to a more effective refresh cycle that is definitely need, needed by the organization as a whole. And also, we, we've identified that we definitely need to add additional funding for... And also, we, we've identified that we definitely need to add additional funding for various software licensing to keep up with modern business support needs as a whole. Ready to move to CIP? If you want to turn your attention to page two twenty-seven, the CIP. There are no, no changes made from last year's FY twenty thirteen to seventeen, CIP that was presented and approved by council, with the FY thirteen funds that were appropriated. We're currently working, in the process of working on the police dispatch phone upgrades, system upgrade, along with assessing the various options required for the library infrastructure tieback to City Hall, that will also increase the capacity for future server consolidation at that point for more effective efficiencies. We, we do recommend that we go ahead and appropriate the FY fourteen funding to now address the citywide phone system modernization project that was proposed, as well as to directly connect Aurora House's infrastructure back to City Hall, and also add some additional COOP DR infrastructure capacity throughout the city. The phones and the, the additional COOP DR infrastructure actually does provide additional capacity support for the schools as well, they're, they're included within this plan. The phones in particular, it's to replace the PBX systems. We have ten-to-fifteen-year-old PBX systems predominantly throughout the school system, and a large portion of that is also to cover the fact that the vast majority of handsets within the schools must be replaced. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions? Councilmember Barry?
This is not so much a question as a, as a comment. In looking at this budget, once again, I, I would recommend to my fellow council members that we support addition of two items that have not been funded in the two thousand and fourteen budget. I was concerned that there was an unmet need for server and other virtualization software licensing. I think this is an, this is a regrettable exposure for the city. I think that we, we need to turn our attention to ensure that we are fully licensed and our, our software is, is documented. I think this is a, it's a, it's a seventy-five thousand dollar expenditure, but I think it is, I think in the long run, it serves the city well, it brings us into compliance, and I think that's what we need to do because we don't want to be out of compliance, we don't want to be in a situation where our software licensing is, is suspect in any way. And the second is an issue, again, that was, was discussed, that I'm, I'd like to more, have more, either more information about or simply signal to the rest of council that I was concerned about, about the IT division being required to provide support services for the radio system initiative. I, I am concerned about public safety issues, I'm concerned about connectivity, I'm concerned about communication, and to the extent that, that we as council can consider this a little more depth, I'd, I certainly like us to, I don't want us, again, to be in a position where, within this city, especially as we, certainly the school division, has been talking about safety for our children, safety within the community, that we should, we should not, we should not overlook this very important communications piece. So I would, I would like us as a, as a council to consider the effectiveness of, of putting this back into the budget, and, yeah, that's it.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Councilmember Duncan.
It's interesting, as important as what you do is, that we don't have a, I don't know, a kind of a citizen to help you function built into our structure as we do, well, like pensions. I mean, we've got a whole board with somebody who works on that in their private life, and they bring their expertise and, and help the council understand and inspire our confidence that that's being handled well. I wonder if there's any potential to draw from some of the people in the community who, you know, are involved in your field, to, you know, consult with us as a board or commission or just an ad hoc group? Is there any, is there any resource like that that, that you feel would be useful? I mean, I don't want to make more work for you, obviously, but, you know, I mean, we all deal with people here in the community who work at a very high level in this field. Is there anything that's available out there that would be useful to you in doing your job?
Well, yes, there have been a few citizens who have, in the past, indicated they'd like to, you know, help get, give ideas and solutions. The biggest problem is the devil's in the details, it comes down to actually implementing those. Coming up with the ideas and solutions has not been too much of a challenge, but I'm always open and welcome to have more input, and that's, can always be very beneficial because you can't always, especially with a staff this size, you don't have a whole lot of options to think about things in a very different ways. But it does come down to how do you actually get these things implemented? And a lot of these things are also, what I kind of refer to loosely, is the care and feeding of, of these things ongoing. It's the, you know, sustainability, supportability, maintenance of these items that we do implement. That's the heavy lifting, that's what kind of gets us on the day-to-day. So an advisory type of thing can help potentially come up with some other ideas and some, obviously, good cost-saving ideas and some, some initiatives that might have been missed, but unfortunately, it's the day-to-day ongoing support is what we really need the most help with right, right at the moment.
Yeah, I guess I'm thinking more along the lines of, I mean, there's citizen advocacy groups that are arranged around, you know, most of the things that we do, environmental services, transportation and so forth, and to some degree, those help buck up council to invest in some of the things Ms. Barry's talking about. You're kind of on your own, I feel, I mean, you've got the staff with you, but there's nobody saying, hey, he's doing a great job, you know, we ought to give him some more help. And I'm, I guess I'm just looking for a way to try to bring that into things. It's obviously not my area of expertise at all. I do have a general sense that things seem to be, a lot seems to be getting done in a very small space, which you occupy, particularly you, and, and I commend that. The magic words to any politician's ears are, has remained essentially flat, further restructuring and reducing maintenance contracts and reprioritizing budgetary initiatives. You know, if we could achieve that through every category here, that would be great, while still doing the things that are important. It is, I think, vital that we not overlook or, or wait ten years to renew our, you know, equipment and so forth, because if the communications part of what you do particularly doesn't work, then nobody gets anything done.
Correct. I mean, it all hinges on the efficiencies of the organization as a whole, everything.
Right.
This, this day and age, it all relies on IT in one shape, form, or another.
Yeah, those of you who've been at it a longer time are old hat to this, but that's why it's so hard to, you know, do we need another librarian, do we need a police officer, do we need another school teacher, or do we need to buy computers more than once every decade? I mean, they're all important, they're all quite different, and yet somehow we have to figure out how to do that.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I have a question. So do you service the water authority as well?
Currently, yes, but that's not, not a large portion of that.
What percentage of your manpower is that? Approximately ten percent, you know, fifteen percent, something like that?
I think the staff that we predominantly support under the utilities, I believe is around thirty-something staff that, that are, have effective support out of that, so probably about ten or fifteen percent, something along those lines.
The reason I ask is that it's very possible, maybe, I don't know what the time period is, was it like nine months from now, that it may be going away? And so I think we need to be cognizant, maybe more for the city manager, about how, let's say, nine months from now, the world will change a little bit, and maybe there's a fifteen percent less demand for the services that we're talking about today, and the idea of, hey, well, let's hire somebody, I'm not saying I'm against that, but let's hire somebody. It may be that nine months from now, there's not as much need for that person, you might hire two months from now, nine months from now. And again, I'm not directing at what you particularly doing, but in general, I think we need to be cognizant of that and start to really be thinking about it, I'm sure you are, but how that might impact some of the services and people we may be hiring or thinking about hiring in the next six months.
Well, I would like to say, though, with the ten to fifteen percent, that would, should be better clarified as saying ten to fifteen percent of desk, desk-side support services, the actual backend infrastructure services, which is the predominant heavy, heavy lifting within IT, it's far less. You're talking maybe at best a percent or two. They only have a few systems that, on the backend side of things, that require, you know, that care and feed of ongoing support services, which is, unfortunately, it's the non-glamorous side of IT that most people don't see, but it's, the desk-side support services, which is not a large bulk of what is the drain on the staff, it's only about ten to fifteen percent. So the staff that we're actually, have put into the proposed budget, as well as the radio communications, those are, are not even really impacted by this particular, that the sale of the water services.
Yeah, and again, it's not directed, I think you're in a very lean outfit, and from what I've seen and heard, but I guess just in general, I would say we ought to be thinking, kind of have a radar up about that because I would hate to bring people on, or, you know, and then the demand diminishes because we're going to lose whatever percentage of our total workforce that we have right now.
Absolutely, definitely can agree with that.
Thank you.
Thanks very much. Any other questions or comments?
And as we shift next to finance, I would just say, you know, Jamal is, is a one-person show running the show. This is a twenty-four-hour operation, providing IT support for public safety as well as the entire city, so it is, it's an exhausting job, and, and he manages to keep a lot of balls up in the air, and in, a lot of it's a struggle, but there are areas, for instance, with police, where we have our, our computer-aided dispatch, we have a completely paperless system for police when they do summons and they have the, the tough books in the car. When other police officers come to look at that technology, you know, from Arlington or Fairfax County, they say, gee whiz, that's, that's pretty neat. And so we're able to keep things at a high level, even as we, I think, do struggle with how lean we are. The, with respect to finance, finance is one of the beneficiaries of this proposed FTE that would be funded out of IT because that, that IT individual would, would also service MUNIS, which is the backbone of our financial operations. But let me get, let Richard speak to the overall financial budget, or the finance department budget.
Happy Thursday, council, as always. Finance is on page seventy-nine, for those with paper. Good luck to those with electronics. The main focus of finance, our budget, was complying with the three point two percent increase, as, has been discussed over and over. Primarily, it has to do with pension and healthcare costs. However, in order for us to comply with the three point two and address some of the issues that we do have, we did cut temporary help. At this point, it is not a big problem. One of the benefits, again, of the IT position that's in the budget now, it will relieve the deputy, my deputy, from having to be MUNIS administrator. While it is not a lot of time, it doesn't get handled the way it needs to, right? What she does is she'll fix the problem as it comes up, but doesn't permanently address the problem, whereas a full-time position that's there dedicated to that ERP software would be more beneficial for the organization as a whole. The major concern for finance is in the real, real estate assessor's office. As we do more development, as we finalize our water sale, it will become more difficult for the existing staff to meet the assessing needs that the city is going to have to focus on as we go forward. For those of you that may not know, there was a change in the legislation that requires that we have sales through the end of the year as part of the assessor's function. He has to wait until all sales are complete through December before he can begin to do his work. Currently, he does it somewhere around the November, December timeframe. He gets you values by February. Under the new system, he will probably get them to you in April.
So by new system, we're talking about a new state law that was just, just signed by the governor?
And with the existing staff, that becomes very precarious. So what we have as an unmet need for FY fifteen is another appraiser. Okay? We do not, well, we're hoping that we will get through FY fourteen without any issues, but just be aware that that calendar change, the date change, is going to have a major impact on the work that his office does. And what we would like to avoid is guessing about assessed values as we deliberate over the budget in April. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilmember Kalin?
Thank you. Understandably, you don't have a line on there called decision support. About how much time would you say, you know, in FTE terms? And this is something that is normal. Do you spend answering questions from council, doing comparisons, doing runs?
How much time answering questions from I-Robbers?
I'm very careful.
I did not say that.
Being at the receiving end of that, I'm very, you rarely hear me say, by the way, why don't you go look C? I'm very careful about that because I have, I've spent months answering other people's questions. That's a real question.
I, I couldn't tell you. What I will say is this, when I was hired, I was made aware that this is a hands-on job. I didn't realize that it was a bear hug.
Glad you see it as a hug instead of a slap. I think that's good.
We also, and, and we've, I've pointed this out in the past, we do have internal control issues. We, we were able to address the one that I felt was a major concern with the, with the MUNIS system and, and IT. So, I mean, I fully support that. As we go forward, we will be looking at how to structure ourselves so that we can provide the functions that the department should have. Our internal controls are, we do reviews, we try to segregate duties where possible. Our internal audit function is a bare minimum one. We cannot afford to have anybody out. So that's, that's the best way I can answer your question.
Thank you. Councilmember Kalin?
I sort of expected something of that nature, and Ron, I think you probably would, as a guy who works in the private sector, would relate to this. This is an example of the operational risk that we have in, in the city. If the CFO is out when the audit is being done, for whatever reason, creates, you know, we're cooked. I mean, it's very hard then to get an audited statement. We have investors, because we have outstanding bonds, we'll be having more outstanding bonds. This is an example of the exposures, Wyatt, that the city has that is an uncovered risk. And, you know, it's, at some day, at some point in the future, it will come back to bite. There is no doubt about it. So we need to be careful. I don't know what to suggest, we're not, don't make any more FTE suggestions, but I think in terms of best practice management, we need to be aware of how risky we are operating our key functions in this city. Thank you.
Just one question, if I could?
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. About bonding, when we were talking the other night about, you know, projects that we might do, I was a little surprised to hear that, you know, we might not be able to come up with enough projects soon enough if we, you know, set our mind to it. I mean, everywhere I look, seems like we need to bond for something, you know, schools, libraries, dorm room management, whatever. libraries, stormwater management, whatever. If we proceed along, you know, the path that we've mapped out, do you have the time, staff, resources to deal with all the work, whatever it is, that is involved in bonding for these numerous projects in the current fiscal year, in the coming fiscal year?
We do have at our disposal our financial advisors and we work closely with them. One of the positive things about the bonding is that we have a CIP that you guys approve and we're able to do some financial planning. So when it comes time to actually go to market, we are pretty much prepared. What we generally are not prepared for, and we do manage it, is when we do the calls from the rating agencies, because they have questions and then we have to do research to answer their questions and make sure that what we're telling them is our plans that we can stick to, all right? Because that does impact how they see our ability to pay.
That, that's helpful, though, and this is not my area, so IRO will be patient with me. But are there economies of effort involved in dealing with the ratings agencies by, you know, bonding several things at once, packaging them into, into a bundle in a way that, you know, you, you deal with their questions at one shot and you get more bang for the, the effort?
Yes, that's true. However, the more you borrow, the more there are questions about your ability to pay.
You're right. I understand that. No, I'm just thinking.
And there's also questions about, do you have the capacity to expend the money? We certainly have projects here. There is no question. And I believe what came up last night was, well, why can't we bond 10 million at once? Well, Mr. Callan was right in terms of the carrying cost, but the issue, as I told you last week, is manpower. Even if you contract it out, it costs money. And you do have to sit down with somebody that's going to do the contractual work for you. It has to go through a bid process. So now the plan that you had to do internally with staff, you now have to involve two other departments to help you do the procurement and acquire it, sit down and plan it out. And then we still have an issue about contract monitoring. It's not about just the paperwork. Who is going to be out there monitoring the work that's actually being done? So in my mind, if you have $10 million to spend and you go out and bond 10 million, you have to have the capacity to complete the job. And in terms of stormwater, I don't believe we have that capacity.
Okay. You're drawing a picture.
So the plan that's been laid out is the plan that we think that we can accomplish and complete.
Okay. Well, I don't mean to get into the specifics of that. I'm just trying to develop a community understanding. I mean, it does seem like over the next 10 years, we are going to be going to bond more often than we have in the last, in the previous 10 years.
Well, we, we are going to try.
And that's going to involve some staff effort that, you know, may be reflected in your office and in other areas.
Well, we are going to try to bond as many projects as possible, but, I mean, the key for us is going to be to make sure that they are varied, all right? You'll have, you know, the stormwater, you'll have parks and rec, you'll have.
Exactly. As we try to meet the broad community needs, yeah.
And you have the schools, so that way you, you can, you know, do a rather large bond issue, but you'll cover a lot of different projects. If you try to put it on one department, it won't work.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Callan?
Also, depending on the size and the frequency of the borrowings, if there is a time period between the borrowing of the resources and your ability to implement it, you will run into serious cash management issues. And then, then tracking where the money is, how it's being monitored, where it's being reinvested while you wait to use it, all this is staff-intensive as well. And if one is not careful, that's where there are leakages in the system. So it's better to have a specific project that you know you're going to be funding and have the resources that are matched, either in a global sense where it's an amount that already parceled out amongst projects, or as it may be for a major project. But borrowing in advance, pre-funding is good if you've got a really good cash management system that is probably a separate office in itself, so that, that wouldn't be recommended.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Really quick comment. If you have a need for a bunch of assessments, it sounds like you do, that to me is something that may beg for outside contracting. I mean, there are lots of companies or people that can offer those services, particularly if there's a very short demand for a window, like, hey, we've got to get it all done by before April, between January and whatever. To me, just a thought that that begs for some outside contracting, whereas the demand is, is really limited to a short period of time, or the excess demand is limited to a fairly short period of time for, that's just my two cents on that issue.
No, we, we will explore that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We currently use contracted assessing services for new construction, for instance.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you very much. Next.
The next is our city treasurer, Kathy Kay.
I thought Tina was next. She's the only one left. We're going to budge him for cookies. If that's Richard Dunson, cookie, that'll be started.
Good evening, Council. How are you all this evening?
Welcome, madam treasurer. How are you?
Good, thanks. Oh, thanks. My budget is pretty straightforward. It's within the perceived numbers that I was given to stay under. And I do have a couple of things to let you know about. And that's mostly in tax relief, which you'll find on page 89, 88, sorry. If you like my new look, the double glasses, maybe I can see. As you can see here, we, I did take this up another $2,000 and I think that we're going to have to begin to start thinking about the possibility of revamping our tax relief program in the next couple of years. I did a little bit of research quickly on the fly just to see what other jurisdictions do and we are pretty paltry in how we do our, our relief program. But the issue is that we have a lot of people here who are talking about not being able to afford living in their houses. What we do is we give $2,000 max to people who are under about $37,000 of income and $540,000 of assets. We only have about 51 of those individuals. Five of those are the vets that are the veterans who are now being able to have tax exemption 100 percent from, if they're 100 percent disabled. And those numbers have increased significantly and I'm worried that we're going to continue this trend and not be able to have enough money to do that. So that's my spiel on taxes for you.
Okay, any other, any questions or comments for the treasurer? Yes, Councilmember Barry.
I am, I have two questions. I am not familiar with the structure of these constitutional positions as opposed to regular city positions. Do people in your office, oops, sorry, are people in your office required to fill out time sheets? Are you, are you audited?
Yes, we use Munis. Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so you, so we can audit, you know, how much time people are spending on this, that, and the other?
Certainly.
Yep, okay. And the next question is, was it within your office that there were two instances of, of late filings? There was, was it, yeah, there was, there were filings, there was, there were funds collected that were not submitted to?
To the state, right. Because we had. Was that your office? Yes, because we have one employee who does that and he was on vacation.
So how do we not do that?
It's the same problem that we have with the, with, you know, having four people who do everything. We have one, Munis is very difficult to work with. We have people who are doing more, they're more involved now. We have more, you know, they've all been trained on how to do it. And we did not realize that that was not being deposited at the time. It was in the safe and it was not where it was supposed to be. They were sheriff's fees.
Right.
So, no, we have, we've taken care of that internally. However, the state has now changed all of the rules on how sheriff's fees are dealt with yet again. And so we're still sort of fighting with how the state handles what they consider collections and when they consider collections. And we have some internal work that we're doing now.
Basically, you're alive to the issue and you're?
Oh, yes. Absolutely.
Councilmember Callan?
After we all finish, I have to go back to the question that Dave Carter, but after you're finished.
Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. Could you talk for a minute about the billing the stormwater utility tax through your office? Because it sounds like, as I mentioned last night, a replay of your experience last summer with the.
It'll be worse because of the tax exempts.
Except, it's different, so I.
The problem is going to come, the tax rate is going to be set on the 23rd. We issue our bills and set the, the rate the next day for both halves of the billing cycle. Once a bill is created in Munis, you cannot change it. So half of the year will be paid regularly and then we have to do a billing for the second half of the year in November. And we will have to create those bills and institute the fee without really knowing whether or not that's going to work properly or not. Wyatt and I have talked about this a little bit and so have Richard and I, and we are looking into Munis enhancement, but we, again, don't know how that's going to work at this point. So there are lots of issues with the stormwater fee. We have a KAMA import that has to be done, which is the system from the assessor's office, that has to be done before I can even issue bills from Munis. And that has to have the GIS in it for all of the stormwater stuff and the fees and all of the taxed and non-taxed properties. Currently, we don't know where that stands as far as that being able to be imported in time for us to be able to get the tax bills out the first, first week of May. So it's a good question.
Well, that sounds like a doozy to me. I mean, even if I, even if I thought it was the dandiest idea in the world, which it'll come as no surprise to you that I don't, that, I mean, I don't want to say good luck to that, but I just hope we consider, you know, that in terms of how we set a timetable for this thing, if we're going to go ahead with it.
Thank you, Mr. Duncan. Mr. Callan?
If this is the case, if it's really too difficult to do, then maybe we ought to consider a separate billing and see how much that's going to cost. Okay?
We, we, I think that our assessment of it is, is that it will be a challenge in year one.
It will be.
Because of the, of the split billing situation, but not an insurmountable challenge. Would that be?
I, I agree. I think that it will definitely be a, a time-consuming problem and we'll end up being behind on other things like sending out delinquent bills and things like that just because of the manpower issue. But I don't think it's insurmountable, no. I do think that after the first year, it will become part of the system much more efficiently because I'll be able to have it in there before all of the data is taken. Right now, it's the timetable that I'm worried about of the April 23rd and my first week of May billing, because once I set the tax rate and put in, you know, set the bills, I can only add a fee. I can't, I don't know if I can actually, I know I can't manipulate the actual bill.
Councilmember Callan?
Fair enough, but the way it was presented, it was, it was insurmountable and, and it is not insurmountable. If it becomes too difficult, then we have to consider alternatives. But I'm not prepared to say that because there's administrative difficulties working through the billing, tax billing cycle, that this is a component of whether we should go forward with that or not. So I know there, there would be some additional cost, but if, but you're telling me that it could be worked out and not terribly expensive to do.
I'm not saying it's not going to be expensive, but I'm, I am saying that it can happen.
Okay, but it's going to be expensive, okay, if you have it in or not. Okay, but I mean, I'd be clear about that.
I, I'm, I'm wondering what I wasn't clear about. Was I on?
The way you came across the first time, Kathy.
That I said what I was saying?
Yes.
I did not say it was.
The iteration of one problem after another gave you the impression that this was something that would be very difficult.
It is. Munis is very difficult to work with. It's not something that I know any answer to until it's starting to be processed through it. Munis changes the way they do things without telling us how they have changed them.
That's why I asked you.
I never, I never said it was insurmountable. I'm telling you all of the problems I am going to encounter, just so you know. You wanted to ask, you asked the question or Phil asked the question?
I'm trying to ask.
And.
If you could direct your questions and comments through the meeting chairman, that's, there is some reason for that rule.
Well, I'm just saying that I, you know, I'm just giving you every possibility of an issue that's going to come up. After what we went through with the tax rebate, my eyes are very open to what's going to happen.
Yes, Councilmember Callan?
What happened with the tax rebate?
The difficulty of not being able to add it to the bill the way we needed to add it to the bill. We could not create a bill that had it, has, actually shows it as a tax credit. It is a rebate and, or refund, actually, in accounting terms. But I had to send it to the printer, have them custom make a module to be able to process that and make those bills show up, or make the refunds, rebates on the bills show up the way they did.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? Yeah, Madam Treasurer, thank you very much.
Thank you for your resourcefulness.
Well, you know, you do what you can. Mr. Snyder?
Yes, Councilmember Duncan.
I didn't want the tax relief thing to go by unspoken. Thank you, Ms. Barry. As we are contemplating, the things we're contemplating, yeah, I think it'd be very important for us to, again, have a, you know, jurisdictional comparison of what other jurisdictions are doing, you know? Is our $37,000 income limit just way out of line? Have we been too low? I mean, we all hear what the treasurer reported and yet, you know, we don't really have any, we don't have real hard data on it, but $37,000 sounds like a pretty low number to me in current times, so.
That's HUD median. That's what our average, that's what our stat.
So certainly an area that we should look at.
Absolutely.
It was a late night last night.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilmember Duncan.
Wind it up.
What an unruly group.
Get another. I have a beer.
Long overdue. Are there any other questions or comments? And Cindy, you've been taking a list of the different things. Okay, that's good. Questions and comments? Yes, Mr. City Manager?
If I could just say, before we adjourn, just a note on the schedule. Monday night, we'll have Arlington County Fire and Arlington County Sheriff. Those are sort of the two mainliners for Monday night in the first module. And then at 8:30, the school board will be here for the discussion of the school budget. Yes.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
Mr. Duncan?
If I may, I wouldn't think of keeping us here a second longer, but I just wanted to report that I had the pleasure of, well, pleasure, I don't know. It was very interesting this morning to accompany the staff on the tour of the Arlington jail and be happy to share my individual impressions so that we don't keep everybody here. If anybody would care to hear them, if they don't, I will not be insulted, but it was a very informative, good discussion. And I did not speak for everyone or anyone here except myself, but I'm happy to share information if anybody wants to talk to me offline.
Should, should we be glad they let you out?
I was going to say.
We, we did do a, we did do a count when we got in the elevator to make sure that we had as many people leaving as we had. And I was both coming in and allowed out, yeah.
Thank you very much for spending your time doing that. And I know we'll be interested on an individual basis. Yes, Councilmember Callan?
On this issue of outsourcing real estate assessment, is there other guidelines for that? Because I know there's certain functions that you never outsource. Risk is never outsourced, as your bonding is never outsourced in terms of your name. So is this like for a special expertise that would be required? Otherwise, if there's legal difficulties later on, somebody claims a misassessment. If, if they're not part of the city and they go out of business or they're no longer there, you have, you could be exposed to liabilities that would be difficult to control.
I did not have an in-depth discussion with the real estate assessor. He mentioned this issue to me. We had a discussion about. We had a discussion about what options we had, but we didn't go into any great depth. I leaned toward hiring an appraiser, so that's what I've put in the unmet needs. But based on Mr. Tarter's suggestion, we will look at it thoroughly so that when we come back to you, it'll be, this is what we need and why.
Before we, we, we part, the mayor did ask us to start discussing this change in billing periods. Do you want to lay that out, just describe it very quickly, Mr. City Manager, and there's no, obviously, in-depth discussion we can do tonight? The mayor is interested in looking at this. We just had our charter changed, I think. Has that been signed?
It has been signed by the governor, and it's effective July 1st.
Right. To permit us to do it, so...
It's, this is one of these topics that you just sort of scratch your head over, and it can be very vexatious, but I will try to describe it very briefly. And, and Mayor Baruch did ask that, that this be an item that we discuss as part of this budget process. The, our calendar year on which our taxes are assessed and our fiscal year are six months out of sync. And so, you just heard the treasurer talking about the first billing and the second billing. The first billing is in June, and the second billing is in December. The bottom line is, we built this budget assuming that we keep the status quo. And with the status quo, this fiscal year budget that you're, that you have before you will encompass the current tax year plus next tax year, FY, or, or tax year 14, that will start on January 1. So, as a consequence, we make a projection for what that June billing will be. And in our budget, we've assumed a 2.5% growth in assessed value for next year's assessments because we do have a major hotel project, we have the Northgate project. We think that we'll have very modest market appreciation as well. So, that's our assumption for next June, and that's worth about $600,000 that's baked into this budget. So, if we were to decide this year to bring the two into sync, we would have a $600,000 problem that we would need to solve. What Mayor Baruch has suggested is, just for a point of discussion, that if we want to get, move in that direction in order to get more certainty in our budgeting and not have surpluses or have deficits, because the fiscal year and the tax year will be in sync, and so, real estate taxes will be very precise. I mean, there would be maybe a $100,000 swing because of underpayment or something like that. If we were to make that change, he has suggested that we could make up for that $600,000 using fund balance or one-time money. And so, he's put that out for discussion. We can provide more analysis of that, but I wanted to convey that to the council and as a setup for additional discussion, I think, at the preliminary markup.
So, in addition to a potential 14-cent increase, we're suggesting an additional $600,000, which we would remove from fund balance, all, all in one year? Okay. That'll, I think, merit a lot of discussion. Also, we are keeping a list of potential additions. I would be interested in offsetting cuts in non-essential services and non-compensation areas. So, as we go along, I'm interested in offsetting any additions with, with additional cuts.
On the, on where? Cuts where?
I said cuts and non, I'm asking the city manager to propose cuts in non, non-public service and non-compensation areas. On the city side. If we're going to make additions, I'm interested in offsetting cuts. I asked the question for the city manager to provide that information.
Well, isn't this a council decision?
No. Actually, each one of us can ask the city manager for budget information. Thanks.
Well, you can ask it, but if it's, was an unmet need, you're just creating new unmet needs. So, go ahead, but I don't think it makes a lot of sense.
Thank you. I did make the request, and I'll be interested in the information. Thank you. Any other questions or comments this evening? Thank you all very, very much, and thanks to our employees who were here and managers, and thanks especially to our constituent who brought the cookies. Thank you.